Welcome to the June 3, 2019 Salina City Commission meeting. Call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay, Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we will move right into words and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of June 2019 is LGBT Pride Month in the city of Salina. Gary Martin's North Central Chapter of Equality Kansas Chair will read the proclamation.
Mr. Martin, welcome.
Yes, proclamation reads, declaring the month of June 2019 as Pride Month. Whereas our nation is founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, yet many Americans have struggled to see the fulfillment of that promise, and some of the most inspiring moments in history have arisen from civil rights movements that have brought on, that have brought one group after another from the margins into the mainstream of American society. And whereas June marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots, an historic turning point in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals, during these LGBT riots, LGBT, sorry, during these riots, LGBT citizens oppose discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas LGBT pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the Stonewall riots, and June is celebrated as LGBT Pride Month nationwide. And whereas the city of Salina accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city of Salina. And whereas we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudices of all kinds. Now, whereas I, Trent W. Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 Pride Month, I urge the citizens of Salina to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and to celebrate the great diversity of the people of Salina and Saline County. And witness whereof, whereof I have, hereunto, sorry, hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this third day of June 2019.
Thank you. And what is this great city doing to increase education and awareness?
Well, on June 28, we're going to be showing the documentary Stonewall Uprising that details the events of that evening, the Stonewall riots in New York City. And following that, we'll have a guided discussion to discuss the matters. It'll be at the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Salina at 901 Beatrice at 7:00 PM on Friday, June 28.
Thank you very much. Come forward, I'll give you a signed proclamation here. We'll now go to the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the commission on a topic not on today's agenda. I would ask you to limit your topic or your comments to less than five minutes. Anyone? Everyone's here for a reason then, okay, good. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 20, 2019. Item 6.2, approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer line maintenance project number 70026 for Mayor's Specialty Services LLC of Goddard, Kansas, revising the total contract amount to $220,715.01 and extending the final completion to March 7, 2019. And item 6.3, approve First Amendment to the loan agreements between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, acting on behalf of the state of Kansas and Salina, Kansas, for Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, project number 2917, and Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, project number 2957.
Is there any item Commissioner will likely move from the consent agenda?
Mayor Davis, I would like to remove item 6.3, please.
All righty. Any other items? Okay. Entertain action for the remainder of the consent agenda.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve consent agenda items number 6.1 and 6.2.
Second, moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda 6.1 and 6.2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. And now item 6.3.
And I just had some specific questions. I don't know that it's necessary for, you know, for staff to summarize unless...
I think the quick summary is that the loan origination fee has been waived, which represents an $80,000 savings over the total project cost, which is the item that's before you, but staff prepare to answer any questions related to the action item or the project.
Okeydoke, thank you. Basically, this is for the South Well Field and Water Plant, Water Treatment Plant. And I just wanted to go over, in light of some information that we received a couple weeks ago in terms of our interim population estimates, at this point, this loan from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment is funded solely through our water fees. Is that correct? Are you...
That is correct.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, and I didn't get out the packet from before, but we are looking at this point at a 3% annual increase for the next several years. Is that...
Three and a half percent. I did bring those rate studies for you, just in case.
Oh, great, thank you.
You had questions, so if you want to take one of those, I'll pass them on.
Absolutely.
So the rate study that we presented in 2019 was a five-year period. We estimated that the rates would go up three and a half percent on that rate study. A couple of items that I thought were informative for you was, some of the assumptions we made was a .5% growth in accounts that we would be taking over that period of time. We did not assume any growth in consumption. The part, the accounts themselves only, they only recognized about $2 million out of the total $20 million budget for that fund. So it's a very small amount in the number of accounts that you account for. We calculated it out, it's about $7,200 a year if you lose 100 of those accounts. We also did a study, we did some, looked up some information on a historical number of accounts. We went back to 2001, and our average change of accounts over that 15-year period was an increase of .25%. And the number that we have been using in this rate study was .5%. So that's something we could adjust, but it's a pretty minimal amount, and it only really affects the monthly fee that we collect from each account. The number that we really use is the consumption amount, which is 1.7 billion gallons a year. And we have left that as a constant amount throughout that five-year period that we're looking at, when we did the assumptions back in 2019.
Okay.
So if I can offer one clarification, and I'm going to put Debbie on the spot with one question, I think, but as Debbie mentioned, the assumption is no growth in water consumption. The half a percent that she described, on the assumption there's 20,000 accounts, a half a percent represents 100 accounts. And so each account, in addition to their consumption fee, pays a $6 a month fee for having an account and a meter. So 100 accounts times $6 a month is $600 a year, times 12 months is the 7,200 number. So in all of that, in all of those growth assumptions, there's $7,200 a year that's attributable to that half percent growth assumption. The rest is consumption-based. Now for the question that may put Debbie on the spot is, I think we also need to be mindful of residential consumption compared to commercial and industrial consumption. I know we talked about trying to track down that.
We did. Residential consumption is about 56% of our total consumption.
Okay. I'm sorry, you said 56%?
Uh huh.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. And, okay, so I guess, my question is too, we, I mean, we want to be good stewards of the environment, right? And so we're at, you know, $1.7 billion of water consumption right now. If our population stays the same, if it declines a little bit, if we have an older population that's using less water because they're doing, you know, doing less work outside, people get more cognizant of their footprint on our environment. If our water consumption declines, I mean, that's going to be something that gives us pause to reevaluate where our water rates are. I mean, what, you know, what I'm trying to say is, if, if we, if we lost about 250 people in 2018, let's say that's maybe 100 water accounts. So there, you know, right there's that $7,200 a year that you're talking about. And, you know, if we just keep, you know, taking that on, I mean, $7,200 a year might not seem, you know, that, that great, but over the course of a 20-year loan, I mean, we're, it's starting, it's starting to add up. So I guess what I, I guess what I'm getting at is, I would love, you know, I just think we need to be mindful of the fact that our growth projections may not pan out, and that we need to be cognizant that an investment like this, we're all set up, we're all set up to do it right now. We have the annexation, we have the plan, we've gotten started on it. Would it not be prudent maybe to pump the brakes for, and wait until we get like the next official census and make sure that we've got good data to base this on? Because the downtown water plant, we've done the, we've done the improvements to it, and it's, how, how close to capacity is it functioning at right now?
That's one question.
Yeah, 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 I knew it was.
Okay. Our treatment plant's capacity is 20 million gallons a day, and that's based on groundwater and surface water. And the real trick to that question is, we have two chains of treatment. So each one serves 10 million gallons per day. And that plant was completed in 2000, 2001. So we're starting to talk about 20-year-old equipment, that one piece in our chain fails, and our capacity is then 10 million gallons a day until we can get whatever it is repaired and replaced. So we don't look for bad luck, but sometimes gear drives and different things give you pause, and you can't meet 20 million gallons a day. And our well field, in a drought condition, with the work that we've done, will produce about 12 million gallons a day, if all is good and all wells are in service, which isn't always true. So those are, those are kind of the numbers that we look at in trying to guess treatment capacity and keeping 100% of everything in service forever is probably wishful thinking because someday after 20 years, we will have an issue. So we're kind of hedging our bet there. We try to stay ahead of the equipment and make sure everything's up and running, but one piece, and we just cut our capacity in half.
Will we continue to make investments in that plant?
We will, because we need that capacity. And we do. Each year, we have capital improvement projects there. It's that, that major piece of equipment or malfunction. Another could be, we did install a second water service in from the wells, but if the 1935 version that's under the river and under the railroad tracks would fail, we would have another condition where we cannot get as much water to the treatment plant from our well field. So we did get a second line, but it doesn't have full capacity. So there's, there's all kinds of moving parts that can take away from that 20 million gallons a day, and we do our best to stay ahead of it.
I would offer up, there's probably three different considerations that might be at play here. What Martha's describing is redundancy in terms of mechanical failure. What really started the, the water supply study was the drought of 2006.
That's correct.
We initiated the study, and coming out of that study, we looked at plan improvements. We formed the Water Assurance District and paid to form it. And then this was another identified, both acquisition of additional groundwater rights, which, how many rights have we acquired as part of this?
The downtown well field is right at 5,000 acre feet, and the south well field is nearly 2,700 acre feet. So it, it has a large volume of groundwater supply for us also at the south plant.
And then along with that is the plant production capacity at three and a half million compared to 10.
That's correct.
And so you've got mechanical redundancy, you've got drought mitigation or drought response, and then, you know, I don't think population growth was necessarily the motivator for, for the need for the water plant. Now recognizing if our customer base declines and our consumption declines and we've entered into the debt for the, the south water treatment plant, that's an obligation that we'll have to continue to meet and address it as part of the budget. So none of that is saying you can't pump the brakes, but just trying to provide, I guess, some context of, you know, the old saying that when's the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago, and the second best time is today. A lot of this, I think, is for drought preparation, more so than population, in anticipation of population growth.
What is our usage done over, say, the last five years?
I'm glad you asked that, because I wanted to say something on that, so it's a good question. And when you go back to 2011 and 2012, it was dry, drought conditions. And at that point, we were 2.35 billion gallons, as opposed to the 1.9 now, and that's total pumped water. And what's actually makes it through the meters is roughly the 1.75 billion. So in general, in those dry times, we were actually 400 million gallons higher than that conservative number that we say we're using today on consumption. So it, it goes up and down.
So basically, by, by doing this, we're trying to be more proactive than reactive as far as, as addressing the drought. And if I remember right, I've read where that actual drought table, or whatever you want to call it, is actually kind of moving east as far as some of the rainfalls and so on and so forth. That's hard to talk about today, obviously.
The dry line. It took me, it's the dry line, yeah. The dry line. And that would be true that, yeah, USGS has tracked that, and they look at decades and how far water made it, was in the river to the west. And each decade, that moves further to the east, and I think even Mr. Binkston was involved with some work out in Colorado where it's definitely made a move, and it's moving, it's moving east. And I don't know if you'd like to hear the technical work he provided, but it was interesting.
This was in relation to an ABA presentation, but it was simply that a little over 100 years ago, when the line was originally identified, it was identified as the 100th meridian. It's now thought to be somewhere between the 97th and 98th, which obviously moves it to the east, pretty much to where we're located.
Yes. So it's, I think, over the decades, we've seen the, the dryness of the western part of our state and onto the west moving towards us. And truly, we did have the, the conditions in 2006, 2012, it was, in '11, it was very dry, and that's when we seen the higher water usage. And our excess use rates were in place, or water conservations were in place, so that wasn't any driving force down. And then 2018, we were all set up to have our phone conversations and work with all the regulatory agencies on drought and who gets what water out of the river. And our friends to the, to the west, Hays, got pounded with several high rain events and filled Canoplis Lake, and it's been full ever since. So someday, I don't know if it'll be in six years or what, but so far, we've been '06, '12, and '18 for dry conditions for our area. So it will happen again, it's just when and how severe. I don't know if that answered your question. That was kind of a long drug-out story, but hopefully you got your answer.
Martha, with respect to pumping the brakes, could you describe where we're at contractually on this project?
We're under contract with the design build team of Burns and McDonald, and I just got a pay request from them, so let me do some math in my head. I won't be too accurate, but I think to date with that pay request, we will have expended about 4.5 million. And that does not include purchase of the property and some of the other legal aspects. So I could probably say we're 5 million into the project in just round numbers, if that's what you were looking for.
Thank you. And I did, as long as you're up here. I just had a couple of questions on the water main replacement that was also a part of this item. I just wanted to, I wondered if you could refresh my memory about what our current annual water line replacement commitments are going to be, because I know that we had bumped it up to four for a few years, and we've, we're not going to be doing that anymore, so we're going to be, going down to 2 million?
We have one more, I'll call it round of 4 million dollars to get us to the original 20 million.
20 million dollars.
We spent about 16 million.
Right.
And so we have those projects laid out, designed, and we're wanting to get a little further along with the ones we have are in construction. And then following that, the proposal we have is to spend 2 million in, in cash as opposed to debt service per year.
Okay. And once we do reduce to that $2 million amount, are we still going to be replacing the water mains proactively, or are we going to be more or less waiting for problems to occur? Or how is it...
No, we'll, we'll be proactive. We, we have a list to work with, and as soon as we fix this line, it seems to just move over one more block. And so we have a list of projects to work on, and what we do is track water main breaks, and we track water quality complaints, and we place those on heat maps and by address that indicates where's...
Where your problems are.
Where, where's the problems? And we always ask everyone, they say, "Well, we really hate to call," and we say, "That's the only way we know is if your area has an issue." So don't feel you're a nuisance, let us know if you have an issue so that we can, you can be counted, kind of like the census, we got to count you.
Thank you.
So, so...
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And refresh my memory, Debbie, I'll, sorry, Martha. Yeah, I'm sorry, Martha. It was a three and a half percent increase for how many years? Was it projected for...
We do a five-year projection when we do it, and we revisit it every year.
Right.
So this year, you'll see this come back, and we'll look at these numbers again, and we'll look to see, but our, our thought is that three and a half percent would carry us for that full five years.
And then beyond that, if all things remain equal, and I know, would, would we anticipate continuing that? I mean, how long are we going to be continuing the 3.5% rate increase?
We looked at that when we did it last year, and it, we would anticipate that that would be a, kind of a level that we would maintain for a while, just because we knew we could level it out at that point. We didn't want to do three and a half percent this year, and 6% next year, and 2%. We wanted to kind of make that a little bit more level on our consumers, but that's kind of what we were looking at. But every year, we'll look at that number, and we'll see if we've gotten all the numbers included and things like that. And we kind of are trying to go farther and farther out as we look at that number, so...
Any other questions?
Any question, any questions, comments from the public?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, John Blanchard, 250 South 9th Street. Shandy, I moved, so make sure you get that right. Thank you, Commissioner Hodges, for pulling this from the consent agenda. I too read through this and have been quite concerned about the population estimates that we've gone with. And I appreciate the extended conversation today with staff, because if we're looking at trying to predict drought and trying to predict, I can't remember what the other one was, not the, not the population, but...
Mechanical issues.
Mechanical failures and so on. I think we could all agree that none of us here are an actuary, otherwise we wouldn't be here, we'd be filthy rich on a beach somewhere. It's an insurance joke, I'm sure. Commissioner Hoppeck got that one. But anyway, some of the items I've run through, and in particular to the fiscal note, you know, we go through, and I appreciate having the, the table there of the payments, but it's a $32 million water treatment facility, but the term is 40 years. And the interest we're paying on that is 26%. The total price tag on this water treatment facility will be $40,215,000. One of the things that concerned me about the conversation you had, that you said historically we've seen .25% increase in, in customer base, yet that's nowhere near either our actual current conditions or what Wichita State Center for Business and Economic Development Research has projected our growth to be over the next 40 years, which has been 0, .04% annual growth, so one-tenth, less than one-tenth of what we're talking about here. I think this is a classic example, and I've been talking about this water treatment facility recently and for years, that this is the classic example of commitment bias. If, if I'm correct here, if you're populated, you mentioned that you don't expect your usage to grow, and you expect your customer base to grow at half a percent. This past year, the estimate was that we lost 0.6% population growth. That's 1.1, a full 1.1% less than what that calls for. What that tells me is that it doesn't matter if you don't count on any growth of water consumption, you probably shouldn't, because you're going to lose money on the consumption end of it, too. So just the last thing on the fees, the fees, a 3.5% increase this, next year, or the year going forward, the last budget you approved was a 4% increase, okay? And let's not make any mistake about it, those fees are a tax. They're a tax. And I would encourage those of you that believe that these, that these citizens here are undertaxed, and they're undercharged for their water fee, I would hope that you would, if you're not going to pump the brakes on this, I hope that you pump the brakes on some of the other things that you've got planned, because the taxpayer in this community cannot bear that burden, and you're just placing a, this is a 40-year, the water lines are 40 years, and it's not 4.2 million for the water lines, it's 5.3 million for the water lines, it's $847,000 a mile, and we probably have 230 more miles to fix on this, which means we got about 63 years at our current rate to get these fixed. So we've got big problems, we need to figure out what's important to us. And so if you're not going to pump the brakes on this, and it doesn't look like you're going to, I ask that you pump the brakes on other things, because people are going to start leaving if they're overtaxed, and we don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Any other comments? Bring this back to the commission, if there's action.
Do we need to act on both projects separately? Can we combine the action?
It's all one.
It's all, this is again...
It's all, this is again, amending the, what we're doing today is amending the loan agreement to, in respect to the origination fee. Correct? That's what we're doing today. Mayor Davis, I move that we authorize First Amendment to the loan agreements between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, acting on behalf of the State of Kansas and Salina, Kansas, Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Project Number 2917.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve this amendment to the loan agreement, Project Number 2957. Any further comment?
I was just confused. Is this, no, I was, was the motion for 2917 or 2957? I got...
Yeah. The two different recognitions have different numbers.
Right.
I thought Commissioner Hoppick said 17.
Leaves out the two.
Martha, the item identifies Project Number 2917 and 2957, and the recognition awarded...
Separately.
Separately.
Two different numbers.
There's, there are two separate loans with different numbers.
So that's right.
That's correct.
Okay.
I put them separately so we could individually vote on each one in case there was a need.
You know, I mean, how should you provide it all?
I wonder if we could combine.
The way this is structured, I mean, it is one action item for 2917.
2957. So your motion was for...
2917, that's the first one.
And I seconded that. So we can act on them separately.
All right. All those in favor of approving the amendment for Project Number 2917? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes three to one. And any action regarding... Mayor Davis, I move we authorize First Amendment to the loan agreements between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, acting on behalf of the State of Kansas and Salina, Kansas, Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, Project Number 2957.
Second.
Okay. We moved and seconded to approve the amendment for loan, Project Number 2957. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Now go to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 19-11001, vacating an eight-foot-wide north-south utility easement, four foot either side of the common lot line between Lot 7 and 8, Block 3, Country Club Heights, addition to the City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, located on property addressed as 214 Greenway Road.
This, second read, and I believe there's been any comment or any action.
Correct. First action was taken on the 20th of May, and had no comments since then.
Is there any questions or comments from commissioners? Any public comment? All right. Turn it back to the commissioners for action.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve ordinance number 19-11001 on second reading.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. And we now go to 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading ordinance number 19-10995, annexing the South Water Treatment Plan Site located at the southeast corner of South Ohio Street and East Waterwell Road.
This was also approved on first reading, March 11, 2019. And we haven't had any material changes in our last discussion.
Yeah, I wouldn't say you've had any comments, but one intervening development is that we were able to work with Saline County, and they ultimately passed a resolution consenting to the annexation, which was a required step. So now, that explains kind of the delay between March 11, first reading, and today. Now that the resolution consenting to the annexation is in hand, you're in a position to pass on second reading and annex the property.
All right. Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor? I move we approve ordinance number 1910995 on second reading.
Second. All right. Moved and seconded. All in favor, well, it's second reading. We'll have roll call.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. And item 7.3.
Item 7.3, second reading ordinance number 19-10998, changing the zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to PC5 planned service commercial to allow installation of an electronic changeable copy advertising sign, digital billboard on land that is located on the west side of South Ninth Street and is bordered by Riffle Edition Number 2 on the north and Long MacArthur Edition on the south, and is addressed as the 3,400 block of South Ninth Street.
And this item, again, we've had no comments or any additional information in the center.
Correct.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Any comments from the public? Hearing them, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 19-10998.
Second.
All right. Ask...
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. This passes four to zero. And we can now go to Development Business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider acceptance of the offered utility easement and restricted access dedications from MacArthur Enterprises to serve Long MacArthur Edition Number 2.
Mr. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Mr. Gary Gleason has been working with Salina 2020 to try to get an advertising sign placed on the property that's the former Interstate 135 slip ramps north of Long MacArthur Ford. That property is currently zoned A1 agricultural, and advertising signs are not permitted in agricultural districts. And so the applicant requested the rezoning of this property to Plan C5 to allow placement of that sign along the east side of Interstate 135. The proposed sign would be 14 by 48, would be set back 30 feet from the interstate, would be 30 feet in height, and would be classified as an electronic changeable copy advertising sign. This property is currently unplatted, and the zoning ordinance requires that land be subdivided in accordance with the city subdivision regulations prior to rezoning that property to any district other than A1. So a plat of this property has now been submitted and approved, and the city commission had approved the zoning change for this property conditioned on satisfactory plating to the property on March 25. So that condition has now been fulfilled, and this plat creates a single surveyed lot for the sign. And the property be platted, you can see by the shape, is triangular shape due to the configuration of the slip ramps that used to come off the interstate before Schilling Road interchange was built. So this property has 1,600 feet of frontage on I-135, but only 250 feet of frontage on Ninth Street. So as far as future access and, or street access, that will be addressed further when the property is replatted for actual development. The same goes with utility extensions. Staff would view this as kind of a placeholder plat that's being done to create a legal lot, but any further development of the property is going to require some middle of a replat. The only complication related to this property is that back in 1999, there was a utility project putting water and sewer lines down Ninth Street to serve the Long MacArthur Ford and Marshall Motors. This tract was served, but the city at large picked up the payment of cost for utilities because it was owned by KDOT at the time. So the city commission directed staff to develop a method of cost recovery which would be used when the property was developed. And the complication here is that this property is not really being developed at this time. There's no use that's going to hook up to city water and sewer. And so the cost recovery ordinance does state, when the public interest is served by a reasonable delay in payment, the governing body may approve an agreement with the parties seeking to develop the tract specifying when the payment shall be made and other terms and conditions. So we think that because there are no plans to actually develop this property or hook up to utilities at this time, that the commission could direct staff to prepare an agreement with MacArthur Enterprises that defers payment until there's actually a connection made to the city's water and sewer system. So the planning commission reviewed this one-lot plat on May 21. They voted six to zero to approve it. And the action before you today, if you concur with their action, would be to authorize the mayor to sign the plat and accept the offered utility easement and restricted access dedications on behalf of the city. In the alternative, the commission could decline to accept the offered dedications and return this plat to the planning commission stating your reasons for not wishing to accept the dedications. So this is all being done to facilitate the zoning change, to facilitate the sign, but it's not being done to facilitate any actual development. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to thank staff for answering a question I had. I was somewhat concerned that we were needing to plat something to just put a sign in. And I thought maybe perhaps we had missed a step or, as far as allowing a electronic sign to be posted on an agricultural piece, because it seemed like that would be a fairly simple thing to do, because we are going to have a separate access easement. But this is not our rule. From staff, I found out that this is from the KDOT from the state of Kansas. So this isn't our rule. So I was thinking that...
We were actually contacted by KDOT today, and they asked for a copy of the ordinance changing the zoning on this property, and we told them they would have to wait until after this afternoon's meeting.
So I was glad to hear that that fell on KDOT and not on us. So anyway, thank you for answering those questions, guys.
And Mr. Andrew, I did just have one question, too. There is still, as this property may be developed in the future, there still is the opportunity to receive payment for, for the utilities that were extended to that site?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. The anticipated, I don't think anybody in 1999 could have come up with this scenario where there was going to be a plat of the property just to put a sign on it. And so the plating was the trigger, but there was also a safeguard in there that the city commission was authorized to enter into an agreement if it was in the public interest to defer payment. And so when there actually is a use that connects to the utilities, that would be the appropriate time for the city to be compensated. And it's, you can't really see it on, but there's another piece where the Hilton Garden Inn is actually also built on the former KDOT slip ramps. And when Mr. Riffle developed that property, he did make a cost recovery fee at that time when it actually connected to utilities. And so from staff's perspective, it makes sense to come up with an agreement that defers that payment until there's actually a physical connection made to our utilities. So nothing else can happen on this property besides a sign without a site plan and without a plat coming back before this body, and that would be the time to address that.
And that, is that deferral included in our action today, or is that...
Well, what we would suggest is if you, if you take action to authorize the mayor to sign the plat, it would be appropriate to perhaps have a follow-up motion. We've got it on page five of your report there, that you could direct staff to prepare an agreement that defers payment until there's a connection made to the city's water or sewer system. I think step one would be to have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the plat, and then if you so desire, you could make a motion to direct staff to prepare an agreement that defers payment until there's actually a connection made to the city's water or sanitary sewer system.
All right. Thank you.
And that, I was just going to ask, and that needs to be made in the form of two separate motions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have an opinion, Greg?
Maybe you asked just to ask Mr. Andrew to review the anticipated sequence of events proposed. What did you...
Well, we have, because the planning commission approved the plat, the zoning has been approved at second reading on this meeting, the authorization of the mayor to sign the plat will allow it to be recorded. Since there's no plan to hook up to any utilities at this time, the agreement that defers payment would actually be a follow-up action that would occur in the future.
Are you thinking it'd be appropriate for that to be addressed as part of the authorization to sign the plat?
Sure.
That's what I wanted to make sure, I didn't suggest something that was...
It could essentially be a condition of your approval.
I wanted to be sure I wasn't suggesting something that was different than what Mr. Andrew envisioned, so that certainly seems like...
They give us that option. And that should be mentioned as part of any motion?
The motion authorizing the signature of the plat.
It could be a motion to authorize you to sign the plat, accept the offered dedications, and to direct staff to prepare an agreement that defers payment until a connection's made to city's water and sanitary sewer system.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from the public?
Okay, so bring it back to the commission for action.
I'll take a stab at this. Mayor Davis, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the plat and accept the offered utility easement and restricted access dedication on behalf of the city, and direct staff to prepare an agreement that defers payment until there is a connection made to the city's water and sanitary sewer system.
Second.
And just slight technical, should be water or sanitary as opposed to and?
That keeps the option open versus they connect to one and not the other.
And/or.
And, you could do, if you can get or in there, that would be more...
Or sanitary sewer system, I'm sorry. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And before the listed other business, do we have any other concerns that need to be brought up? Going once, twice. All right, we're ready for our official other business.
30 minutes.
I was just going to ask, is this something that is so sensitive that it needs to be discussed in executive session? Or is this something that we can discuss in open session?
As it relates to negotiation, my assumption is that there is benefit to attorney-client privileged discussion in executive session. That is at the discretion of the governing body. If you wish to negotiate our position in the open, you could. It impacts our negotiations with the other party.
Though we would always have the option of continuing negotiation in public afterwards.
Sure.
Certainly. The, in that the governing body holds the privilege associated with any attorney-client privileged communications, it's always, we hope you understand, are cautious about deciding that for you. It's ultimately your call based on the circumstances at the time, and even if it follows a privileged communication, it's a matter that we simply have to be sure that we don't presume where you might wish to go with any, what would be qualified as privileged conversations. But when the time is right for those to be public is yours to determine.
Practically speaking, setting aside this particular topic and the party that we're negotiating with, my presumption is, you know, part of the point of a negotiation is to have the ability to talk about our position and offers and... to have the ability to talk about our position and offers and counteroffers. And strategically, that hinders us if we're doing, trying to do that in open session.
I get your, I get your point. And I think that, I would just say that, you know, we're all Saline County taxpayers here. And if, after this executive session and we decide on the negotiation that we want to do, I would just hope that at some point, we could schedule another joint meeting because I really feel like that these are probably points that if you had all 10 of us around a table, we could get them knocked out pretty quickly instead of having the letter from one attorney, the consultation, the letter or coordination with staff, another letter. I just, I, the process just feels a little bit cumbersome at this point to me because I feel like we're, you know, there's just the opportunity to get this done and put it behind us. So, is there a possibility that we'll be taking action as a result of this item?
Yes. I would say you ought to leave that option open.
Okay. And you said 30 minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subjects of negotiations with Saline County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:25?
5:25.
5:25 PM.
Second. Moves in second to recess into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right, call the meeting back into regular session.
I move the City Commission recessed into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subject of, subjects of negotiations with Saline County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:43 PM.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie is for zero.
Okay, we're now back in regular session. We've had discussion regarding the Expo Center agreement with Celine County and we've made some progress and I'd like to share that progress with you. Now I'll ask Commissioner Hodges to take the lead in this.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I think that we want to thank our county counterparts for presenting this proposal to us and for taking the initiative and I think that we have kind of a general response that, that we would like to, to share with the County Commission. The lease term that I think that the consensus among the, the four of us here today was looking at probably a 20-year lease term and just some mention or some acknowledgement that ideally with the investment that we've put in with the Tony's Pizza Event Center and our anticipated investment in the Smoky Hill River revitalization, that we develop some plans that are aesthetically compatible with, with both of those items and that we kind of come to a philosophical agreement in terms of those plans and the schedule for their implementation. Recognizing that while some improvements can be made over time, it's important to place an emphasis on making an impact with a, with a significant early initial investment. And also wanting to thank the County Commission for acknowledging the immediate economic impact that a warm-up barn can have and, and help us bring in more shows and really expand our reach there and thank them for making the offer to go ahead and make that $1.2 million investment in a warm-up arena. And I think one item that we're still to kind, still under discussion is there wasn't any mention of the actual rodeo. So I think that that's certainly something that we'll need to follow up on and, and have a discussion on that. And however that discussion takes place, if it, the County Commission wants to meet with us, I think we're all willing to meet with them. If that's a matter for staffs to work out, we're, we're open to suggestion.
And I think one of the reasons for the, the 20-year lease would be that it pretty much would put us in line with the improvements being made with their longevity is kind of probably a way that I would, I would look at it.
Did we want to speak to the Greeley Road?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I had that down here that originally when we had looked at some plans, we had talked about straightening Greeley Road out and, and changing a little bit of the access around the T-PAC and also around the, the grounds that we're discussing. And, and at this point, it looks like we're going to leave the Greeley Road the way it is, would like to, which means we will not be addressing the removal of, is it bar number two?
Number two.
And, and therefore really don't see us as the city investing any money in the, in the fairgrounds at this time would be, would be my thoughts.
Yeah, just that the aesthetic blending of the river and the T-FAC building are the, the most important issues for us.
Can't improve on anything that's already been communicated very succinctly.
If that represents a consensus, I, my suggestion would be that you instruct staff to write some correspondence to that effect and share it with the County Commission. And we'd be happy to do that.
I believe that would be a.
Yes, I think that's the consensus.
My consensus. Thank you very much and we look forward to working with our County Commission colleagues. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any one objecting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.